Fifty.
Fifteen.
Fifty.
Five zero.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's very efficient. Everybody should have one.
I think I would in the other city.
Oh.
I used to race. Never heard. But in the street.
It's two inches.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's also small, double cross.
Yeah, yeah.
We can't, we can't do that. I tried writing in New York City.
This is crazy.
Yeah. Where are you?
Yeah.
Oh.
Step off.
Yeah. That is more than much, really. I thought that would just be for the first time.
Best not, uh, stop long term.
It's a bridge.
Yeah. Part of the fact is.
All right, I'll call to order. Can I get Commissioner Martin Marshall to lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure, let's do this.
All right, I'm gonna take off your hat. Okay, yes, take off your hats and put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the report of which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a roll call, please? Commissioner Martin Marshall.
Hello, everyone, I'm here.
Commissioner Camacho.
I'm here.
Commissioner Ontiveros.
Present.
Commissioner Chu.
Present.
Commissioner Kane.
Present.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
And Chair Molina.
Here.
Everyone's present.
Um, all right, uh, I'm gonna open public comment. This is for anything not on the agenda. Was there anything submitted for public comment not on the agenda? No, okay, close. All right, and then commu- uh, Commissioner Communication. I'll go first. The Metro A line opened on Friday, and it's really cool to have that type of access to Pomona. I don't know if anyone went to the grand opening on Friday. I know staff here were there. Um, I got to get there a little later, um, during the celebration, and all the art was gone, so I was a little sad, but got to take the train to downtown L.A. and have dinner and come back home. It was really nice and reminded me how much I love using the train. Commissioner Ontiveros.
Uh, question for staff. Um, so during the s- street sweeping, I've noticed that on certain days, it used to be both sides of the streets, but then I noticed that they alternated the dates, so it'd be one day w- one side and the other. Who, who thought of that idea? Cause that was great. That was really, really good.
It, Public Works.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that just alleviates so much chaos in parking and, and I think that was a great idea, so, thank you.
Commissioner Chu.
Just a quick question or comment. Do, I, I'm sure that's Public Works, that's been dealing with, uh, L.A. Metro and the seventy-one construction, right? Uh, can you point me to the, maybe afterwards, can you point me to the right staff to, uh, to talk to about the seventy-one construction? Or I have some comments on the MOTs, and that's horrible. I was trapped for thirty minutes on a Saturday night, so that was not fun. So, thank you.
The microphones are so sensitive. If you do have a public comment card to submit for an agendaized item, please get that to staff, just for anyone in the audience. All right, if there's nothing else, we'll go to the consent calendar.
Motion to.
Go ahead. Commissioner Chu motioned, and Commissioner Camacho seconded.
Yes.
Can I get a roll call vote, please? Commissioner Martin Marshall?
Yes.
Commissioner Camacho?
Yes.
Commissioner Ontiveros?
Yes.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
And Commissioner Kane?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Chair Molina?
Yes.
That motion passes.
All right, and I'll pass it back on to you, staff, for public hearing.
So, the item before you tonight is an appeal of zoning administrator, uh, hearing, uh, an approval for a development plan review located at thirteen seventy-seven North Gary, and I will give it to Alina Barone, who's one of our senior planners, to present the item.
Oh, real quick, I, um, I was notified that I'm within, uh, nine hundred and forty feet of the project. However, I was told by our city attorney that, um, if I'm a beneficiary in the trust, an irrevocable trust, I don't, I'm not quite sure if it's an irrevocable trust. Like, I'm not really quite sure what the answer is, so, and, and I'm not trying to, like, get in trouble or break any laws here, so I just need some guidance. Um, I'm pretty sure the trust is ir- irrevocable, not irrevoc- I mean, I'm not really sure, so I don't know what to do.
Yeah, so we did have a discussion earlier, and, um, from our discussion, you had told me that, um, there was, that you ran a beneficiary at the trust and that you were only a renter of the property, so then that's why I told you that it was okay for you to participate in this discussion, but if that has changed and you are a beneficiary of a trust, um, out of the utmost, um, the utmost transparency, I would request that you, you would recuse yourself.
Okay, so unfortunately, I'm gonna probably have to do that.
Okay.
Just because I don't wanna cause any issues with this vote. All right, thanks.
So you'll, so you'll have to recuse yourself and you'll have to step outside of the auditorium?
Yeah, so, Ta will bring you over to the beta room, and then we'll call you back on the next item. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
This is Appeal of Development Plan Review, DPR zero 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 nine four one dash twenty twenty-four, Appeal Number zero 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 five eight two dash twenty twenty-five. The applicant is Sarah Johnson of Pathway of Tomorrow. On July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, the zoning administrator held a public hearing and approved a request for an a hundred percent affordable housing development project, which was a request to develop a point four-eight acre site, um, with a four-story, thirty-five-unit residential development. The proposed project included a request to utilize California State Density Bonus Law, Government Code Section six five nine one five, uh, to increase the density from forty units per acre to seventy-four units per acre. In the approval resolution, um, during the public hearing, the zoning administrator included the following conditions of approval. One, that the applicant shall remove all south-facing balconies on the development along the property line. Two, to minimize, um, on-street parking, the applicant shall submit evidence of leasing agreements which reflect a maximum of nineteen occupants with vehicles, subject to the approval of the Development Services Director. That three, the applicant shall remove the existing chain link fence along the south property line and erect a six-foot wall or wrought iron fence to the extent feasible in coordination with the adjacent property owner, subject to the approval of the Development Services Director. And the last two, um, prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, the applicant slash developer shall be responsible for the issuance or installation and cost of the decorative fencing, a minimum of forty-two inches high, along Gary Avenue's raised landscaped median between Orange Grove Avenue and Jefferson Avenue. The applicant shall work with Planning Division staff as well as public work staff on the design of the decorative fence. And then number five, the placement of an approved public art application, um, on the project site. So, the applicant must place an approved public art on the private development. Um, typically, this is conditioned as an option, um, so this is listed as a requirement for the development. And then again, related to previous action, on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, um, City Councilmember Deborah Martin filed an appeal of the decision.
I wanted to clarify that, uh, the mayor also filed an appeal.
So before you today is the development plan review. Um, again, this is a request for, uh, to develop two vacant parcels, approximately point four, uh, four-eight acres into a four-story residential development with thirty-five units and onsite amenities. The following code sections are applicable to the project, the Pomona Corridor Specific Plan, the Pomona Zoning and Development Code, the California Government Code Section six five nine one five dash six five nine one eight, which is also known as the California State Density Bonus, as well as Senate Bill three thirty. So this is an aerial view of the subject property, um, which is outlined here in red. Um, the general plan use designation for this specific property is located within the neighborhood edge. It has the general plan transect of T four B, which contemplates forty dwelling units per acre. It is within the Pomona Corridor Specific Plan area, um, more specifically, the downtown gateway segment, and is within Council District One, and is adjacent to the Wilton Heights Historic District, um, that is to the west of the development, and then to the east of the development, uh, the Lincoln Park Historic District. And then again, here's a look at the aerial. Um, you'll notice that the development is south of Orange Grove Avenue and east of North Garden Street and north of Jefferson Avenue. So this is a view west from Gary Avenue of the proposed development location. And this is a closer look at the site itself, which is currently undeveloped, um, and only maintains a concrete pad onsite and some landscaping. And this is the adjacent property to the north with a look at the landscaped median, along Gary Avenue. And then the adjacent property south, which is the elementary school. And then this is a look at the facade along Gary Avenue. This housing development reflects a contemporary architectural design, um, with varying colors and finishes. Each elevation of this development, um, contains varying depths, varying depths throughout, um, including different sized, um, different sized windows, um, as well as materials, including stucco and metal panels varying in color. Again, the project also contemplates, um, a large-scale mural on the north elevation, um, that will be visible to pedestrians along Gary Avenue. This is the proposed site plan, where the subject building is along the south property line. So this is a look at the first floor. Um, the first floor does accommodate a mailroom as well as a lounge. This is also the location of the onsite parking, um, which are a total of nineteen. This is a look at the second floor, which again has an onsite amenity lounge, as well as a laundry room and outdoor patio and bicycle storage. And then taking a look at the third floor, which will have their onsite gym as well as, um, bike storage, a balcony attached to the gym, as well as a lounge. And another look, um, at the fourth floor, which will have a rooftop garden, community room and lounge, and again, offer, um, the onsite bike storage as well. This development in total features sixteen two-bedroom units and nineteen one-bedroom units. This is a look at that material board. Again, um, mixed materials being proposed, as well as varying colors, um, and an etched metal panel along the exterior east elevation, which faces Gary Avenue. This is a look at the south elevation, as well as the west. The south elevation, um, if you can recall from the beginning of the presentation, um, was conditioned to remove balconies, um, during the zoning administrator hearing. Moving into California State Density Bonus Law, um, the applicant has requested to utilize California State Density Bonus Law, which is Government Code six five nine one five six five nine one eight, which grants benefits to residential developments that propose a percentage of units as affordable. Any applicant who meets the requirements of this government code section is entitled to receive benefits, which includes an increase in the permitted density, production and site development standards through waivers and/or concession, and then special parking requirements as a matter of law. A summary of the density, the project site, um, again, is located within the transect, uh, T four B. This specific, uh, transect allows, um, allows for up to twenty units, um, so this is, that's the calculation at forty dwelling units per acre. The project is proposing to utilize an eighty percent increase in the density, to propose thirty-five units at seventy-four units, uh, per acre. So that's an additional fifteen units, um, than what is permitted currently by the Pomona General Plan, as well as the Pomona Corridor Specific Plan. So going over California State Density Bonus Law, um, in California State Density Bonus Law, a city must grant one or more incentives slash concessions to each project that qualifies for state density bonus. The number of required incentives that we are required to grant is based on the percentage of affordable units in the project. A concession or incentive can be defined as a reduction of site development standards or modification of zoning, architectural design requirements. These sound like reductions in setbacks or any sort of minimum square footage requirements, approval of mixed-use zoning, or other regulatory incentives or concession that result in an identifiable or actual cost reduction. And then in addition, when you qualify for California State Density Bonus, you are eligible to request waivers. So, a city isn't permitted to apply any kind of development standard that physically precludes the construction of a project at its permitted density and with the granted incentives or concessions. A development qualifying for density bonus may also receive a waiver, which is, could be a reduction to any number of development standards that don't necessarily count as incentives or concessions. So what this looks like, uh, for waivers for development projects is if it is physically impossible for you to meet the requirement without you reducing the number of units, that is considered a waiver. The applicant is proposing the dedication of a hundred percent of the thirty-five units to low-income affordability levels. So based on the California State Density Bonus Law, the project is eligible to receive four incentives slash concessions. These are the following that were requested by the applicant, with number one being the minimum unit size. The minimum unit size, um, does not, does not, uh, exist in the base code, but it does exist in the Pomona Corridor Specific Plan. Um, so we have, one bedroom, um, is required to be at six hundred square feet and two bedrooms at eight hundred square feet. The applicant is proposing four hundred and sixty-seven square feet for the one bedroom and respectively, five hundred and sixty-two square feet for the two-bedroom. The second request is regarding public open space. Uh, the applicant was requesting to provide private common open space in lieu of public open space, and then is also requesting a reduced side yard setback of, um, five feet, uh, so they are currently required to have ten. Um, this is specifically along the south property line. And then number four, required parking. The required number of parking spaces, um, through California State Density Bonus Law is forty-three. Um, the proposed project is requesting nineteen. In addition, the applicant is requesting the following waivers, um, with one being building height, um, the requirement is three stories maximum. The proposed project is at four stories. Um, in addition to that, they are requesting a waiver for the building massing, um, which refers to the length and height. Um, the requirement ratios are as followed in the requirement. Um, they are proposing, um, a bit of a reduction, um, but this is generally, um, generally difficult, or honestly, pretty difficult to meet in terms of ratios, um, for projects that are pretty narrow in width. The frontage coverage, um, along Gary Avenue as well, um, frontage coverage means the building length, um, is required to take up seventy percent minimum. The building, uh, due to access requirements, uh, for their fire lane, um, leaves them at sixty-six percent. Again, these are standards that would make it physically impossible, should they meet them, um, to get the same number of units that they are allotted by state law. So moving into general plan compliance, um, the project is consistent with the following general plan goals and policies. Uh, Goal sixty G one, which is to improve the physical character, economic vitality, and mobility function of the city's most visible and well-traveled corridors. Goal sixty G four, promote the success and improvement of the existing corridor development. Goal six B G ten, which is promote the transjoining of the most visible and highly traveled streets. And then Policy seven F P four, which is to establish an appropriate relationship between public space and private development, with building entrances oriented towards streets, utilizing shop fronts, porches, patios, or outdoor spaces that overlook and interact with front yards or sidewalks. And then Housing Element Policy one point four, which is to encourage affordable housing through both regulatory mandates and incentive programs. In summary, the proposed project is compliant with all applicable objective design standards of the Pomona Corridor Specific Plan, as well as all applicable city and state standards. The proposed project, um, meets the applicable findings for a development plan review and meets the intent of the general plan. So moving on to Senate Bill three thirty, um, and what it means, uh, for disapproving projects. So Senate Bill three thirty establishes limitations on the ability of local governments to disapprove a housing development project that is applicable with the compliant, um, objective general plan and zoning standards. A housing development would have to have a specific adverse impact upon public health or safety in order to be disapproved. So, can housing projects be disapproved? Yes, but findings must be made using a high preponderance of evidence. So what exactly does that mean? So again, specific adverse impact upon public health or safety. So a specific adverse impact, um, is a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on an objective, identified written public health or safety standard policies or conditions as they existed on the date of the application was deemed complete. So, this bar is an incredibly high legal bar that is established by the state. So, one of the only examples of this being applied, um, that we have in the state of California is related to, uh, the city of Monterey. Uh, Monterey has an issue with water, so they have water allocations that are dedicated to each individual parcel. Um, this is something that was already adopted, so when a housing application comes in and they don't have enough water, they technically do have the ability to deny a housing application because that specific site is exceeding the designated water allocation. So, what if a project is disapproved, uh, without findings? So these are some of our prizes. Open to litigation from the applicant, open to litigation from the Attorney General's Office, um, which specifically is the Housing Accountability Unit, subject to attorneys' fees for the plaintiff as well as defense, and then subject to fines of ten thousand minimum per unit. This project may be considered, um, exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, um, pursuant to Section one five three three two of the SEQUAL guidelines, um, and that the site is less than five acres, the project site has no value of, uh, as habitat for endangered or rare threatened species, the proposed project will not have any significant of, effects upon the environment, and the site can adequately be served by all required utilities and public services. All public noting, or all public noticing was, was completed as required by law, and this item has received one letter, uh, following the posting of the staff report, um, in support of the project, which is on the dais for you, as well as, um, outside on the table for the general public to read as well. Um, this comes from, um, this from, comes from the California HDF, which is the Housing Defense Fund. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission uphold the decision of the zoning administrator approving DPR zero 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 nine four one dash twenty twenty-four ZA Resolution Number twenty-five dash zero zero seven, and adopt the attached PC Resolution Number twenty-five dash zero one three. This concludes staff's presentation. Um, I, as well as the applicant, are available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, before we get started, um, I'd like to remind the commission that this is just a time for clarifying questions. Um, please withhold any personal opinions until we've heard from the public. So at this time, just clarifying questions. Commissioner Alfredo Camacho.
What was the rationale for the appeal? I know that you had the conditions of approval. I just want to get clarity on the process. Sorry, Alina. When a project comes to us, we, we get a project. We hear from you, we hear from the public, and then we impose conditions. What is that process like when it's a DPR? And then what was the outcome of that? That it came as an appeal and it wasn't resolved there?
Yeah, so the, the zoning administrator hearing is an appeal process, or it's a discretionary action, so it abides by an appeal process. So, okay, so on July 31st, 2025 is when Councilmember Deborah Martin filed an appeal directly with City Clerk. Hers is the first one that's on record. Thus, it was included in the staff report. We do have a copy of the requested appeal as well. Jeff, if you'd like to briefly summarize what's included in the appeal section or the appeal provided?
So, and, and it's in your packet. The concerns were about, says, were in relation to Lincoln Elementary and the safety of the children. Proposed building height presents a significant issue as it would overlook the children's playground at Lincoln Elementary. And that the intrusion compromises the privacy of the children during their playtime, but also raises serious safety concerns. Presence of a tall building so close to the playground could create an environment, an environment where children feel watched or unsafe. Lack, lack of parking was an issue. And then, as it relates to Lincoln, because they'd have to park on West Jefferson and that would make drop off and pickup more difficult for Lincoln Elementary.
My apologies. I thought that was resolved with the, that's why I was asking about the conditions. I thought that was resolved with the, the condition of approval to remove the balcony. But, okay, that, that's all my question.
In the renderings, they did show south-facing balconies. Those were eliminated, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chu.
Is there a, so I know these are 100% affordable units. Is there a target rent rate for these?
So they are all going to be dedicated to low-income affordability levels.
Do you know which level it is at? I know there's different tiers, right?
This one is just low.
Okay, do you remember what the threshold is for low? I, I don't remember what the numbers are.
It should be up to 50% AMI.
Okay.
50% of the area median income.
Which is approximately?
It's 50 to 80.
50 to 80?
50 to 80, and then, right, because 80 is above is moderate.
And how many units are, out of the 35, how many units are one-bedroom and how many units are two-bedrooms?
Unit count is split, I believe, 19 to 16. So there are 16 two-bedroom units and 19 one-bedroom units.
16 and 18?
16 and 19.
19, thank you.
Commissioner Ontiveros.
Yes, when was the permit or the application filed for this project?
I would have to double-check our records to see when it was applied for, but it was in 2024.
So it was prior to the updated codes?
Yes, but this is, this was not prior to the code because the code was, I think the code was already adopted, but this is within the Pomona Corridor specific plan.
So, reason I'm asking is, correct me if I'm wrong. So if it's after a certain date of the codes, do we have somewhat of a say how the aesthetics of that project may look? Like the, like the color, the construction? I mean, do we, do we just accept the way a certain building is designed? Or can we have a say of?
Well, the purpose of the design review is for you to ultimately weigh in on the design and make recommendations or ask if the applicant could make an adjustment toward their specific design. But this, this project is within the Pomona Corridor specific plan. So it follows the guidelines that are written in that specific plan, not within the base code.
Okay, so it would be different if it wasn't in this corridor? Is that?
Yes, so the corridor follows the Pomona Corridor specific plan design guidelines. And the ones in the base code, projects in the base code follow, follow all the objective design standards. The, the base code doesn't have recommended guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
The, the base codes for the whole city? And then the, when there's specific plans, like the downtown ones, specifically for that area, so the corridor like Gary gets it. Commissioner Kane?
Thank you, staff, for the detailed report. This is to the applicant, I believe. Is it my understanding that the lease agreement will only allow 19?
Commissioner Kane, we're gonna have the applicant come up after they get to present. So can you withhold your questions until they come up? There'll be an appropriate time for that. But if you do have any questions for the staff right now, it's for that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so we went and looked. The question was, so lower income, the low income depends on the number of people in your household? So for one person, it's $84,850 a year. Up to four persons, it's $121,150. So just reference.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question to clarify. You showed us four, I don't know if you can go back to the page where the waivers were? Is it four allowances and then three waivers? Or what's the difference there? Or the concessions, there you go.
Yeah, so we have four concessions and three waivers.
I understand that they get the, the four concessions, but they also get an additional three waivers?
Yeah, so waivers, incentives slash concessions are the ones that are basically the ones that have an identifiable cost reduction for the project. So we're not allowed to deny somebody's request for a concession, again, unless there's some sort of adverse, adverse impact, right? So you're not allowed to, you're not allowed to deny incentives slash concessions. Waivers don't necessarily have to be identifiable cost reductions. Waivers are when it's physically impossible for you to meet the standard and still get the same number of units. So that's why waivers are in an unlimited amount. You can technically file as many waivers as necessary for a development project.
Okay, thank you. And then I saw the reasoning behind Councilwoman Martin's appeal, but do we know why Mayor Sandoval also filed an appeal? And the reasoning behind that?
It did not state a reason.
And any findings that staff, I guess, found that meets the standards of SB 3330 for disapproval that meets those safety or hazard issues that are posed to the greater community? Is there any validity to what the councilwoman listed in her email or in her appeal?
I think the, with staff, when we first looked at it and actually at the hearing itself, the building's over 200 feet from the playground itself. There's a series of portable buildings in between. And then those windows into the portable, portable buildings are tinted. So you can't, can't see in any way. So, you know, whether it's justified or not, that's, I think, a judgment for the commission to make. But staff looked at what are the actual numbers? And I think it was like 220 feet, if I remember correctly, to the actual playground. So it's not up against the playground.
But in addition, for, when we're talking about specific adverse impact upon public health or safety, it has to be a significant, quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact. So it can't necessarily be based on human behavior. It has to be related to, again, something that is significant, quantifiable, and direct, similar to the example I gave where, you know, the city of Monterey has a specific water allocation for every single property. And if a property wants to exceed that, they have the ability to deny that housing project, even if they wanted to apply for California State Density Bonus Law.
Got it. And just to follow up to that, if we decided to move forward with those findings or what you called, and we approve here, and the applicant doesn't agree, does that open us up to possible litigation or lawsuit?
If you want to deny, deny the project this evening.
I guess based on that reasoning, yes.
You would have to state what those direct impacts are. It can't just be a general statement. It has to be, like Alina said in the other case, direct to, related to insufficient water. So you would have to state what the actual direct impact is.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And, and then it is subject to appeal to city council.
I'd like to remind the audience that we're not open to yelling out opinions or commentary. There's time for public comment. If you'd like to say something, there's a public comment card and you send that to staff. But I want to run a meeting that's fair and also respectful to both staff and to the commission here. So please withhold from yelling things out. Thank you. Commissioner Kane?
Did city staff speak with Pomona Unified School District on any possible impacts this would have directly on the elementary school?
All projects, when they come in, when they are routed for review, they are routed to Public Works, to our specific, more specifically, the engineering team, water resources, Pomona Unified School District, all for review of the project. So when the project came in, it, they would have been notified.
Do you know if Pomona Unified opined on it at all?
At that point in time, they did not weigh in on the project.
Thank you.
It was not until the actual hearing, the ZA hearing, that they made any comments. And that's why the balconies were, were removed on that south side.
Okay, if there's no more questions, I'd like to invite the applicant up to the podium, please.
Cameron Crockett.
Wait, hold up, sorry. It is five minutes, eight minutes? I still don't get it. Can we get the timer up? You have eight minutes to make comments. Afterwards, the commission can ask questions and then you have another five minutes for rebuttal afterwards. After public comment. So it's, you speak eight minutes, we ask questions, and then the public can weigh in and then you could come up at the end for five minutes for rebuttal. Okay. Is the timer ready? Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Freud, can you officially open the public?
Oh, yeah, open public hearing. All right, go ahead.
My name's Cameron Crockett. I'm architect at Ultry and Architectural Studio. We're architects of the project. And we've been developing it since the beginning of the year ago. So in, in summary, it's a, what I think is a well-positioned affordable housing solution for your city. It, it, I understand that there's concerns about the parking, but I think it has to be understood in the balance that the very nature of affordable housing is such that it's, we can't afford to give units as big as they would be if we wanted to and we can't afford to give as much parking as we like to. That's the nature of making it more affordable. We're working at about a .5 parking ratio, but because, because of our proximity to bus and other transportation methods, use of scooters to get to and from those local universities or, or shopping, those are alternative methods that we're encouraging. We're even supplying scooter and bike parking for that purpose. The, the price point of 50 to 80% AMI is, is intended to be for young people, young professionals, for people that would otherwise struggle to find market-rate apartment. We've given it a great deal of amenities. It has onsite gym, has a lounge at every floor. It's got a roof deck with a nice roof garden. It's got bike parking, has a lounge at the bottom level. And I think it offers some pretty amazing views out towards the north and south, towards the foothills, which would make these spaces pretty special. The stair tower itself is entirely composed to start to allow you to see the, the surrounding 360-degree view as you go up through it and, and experience it throughout. The units are, are well-balanced. They have nice bedrooms. All of them have natural light with either balconies or in the south side. We have Juliet-style windows that allow a lot of natural light and are intended to make it a, a good living environment for the, for the tenants. So the, the design is, it's unique. And so the, the intention of this is to make the tenants feel like they're part of a community or a village. That, that it's sensitive to the idea that it's, it's a smaller area, but it, that it should feel like a neighborhood. The, the design is, it's problematic, right? It's a four-story building in an area that is largely one or two-story Spanish Revival or other revival styles. I can't make a four-story building that is gonna mimic historic styles and still be functional or even not look comical. But what I can do is start to bring the scale down. And so I'm using shadow elements that change throughout the period of the day that mimic the, the light being cast off of a small village. Or it brings the, the scale of building down to something that's a single family or it's individual. And it starts to also reinforce the metaphor that we're trying to create of this being a village, of this being a community, a family environment that's a, a part of the neighborhood. Yeah? Do I field questions now or do I just sit down?
You could stay up there. Does the commission have any question? Commissioner Chu?
Couple of questions. One, do you know what the approximate rent is for the one unit? I mean, one bedroom or two bedrooms?
Do you have a number for me?
I do not.
Can you come up to the dais, please? Sorry, I, we just need to make sure that it's captured by the microphone.
Yes, the, the rent limits will be in line with those set by the Los Angeles County Development Authority. They will be adjusted to be in accordance with market rents for the neighborhood, such that a, a family or household or individual that makes between 50 and 80% AMI would be able to afford the unit. So the, the, those will be determined at the time that they're, they're available at market. So I can't give you a precise number now, but you can reference the LACDA rent limits for now for 50 to 80% AMI households.
So no, I do see AMI. I just want to get an idea of what the one-bedroom rent will be or the two-bedroom rent would be.
And again, we won't, we won't have that number in.
Not even a rough range?
I can tell you, in, in Long Beach, I know it's a zip code-dependent. In Long Beach, it's like 1825.
For a one-bedroom?
Yeah.
But that's Long Beach, not, yeah. The median income is a lot different from there than it is here.
Correct, correct.
So it'll be a lot lower.
Correct. Do you have a maximum occupancy for a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom in, in your rental agreement? I mean, you can't have like six people living in a one-bedroom, right?
Yeah, I believe that, that's set according to the LACDA household numbers as well. So I believe for a two-bedroom, it should be, shouldn't exceed four people and a one-bedroom shouldn't exceed two people.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kane?
Just so I'm understanding.
Stay up there, yeah. They're just, they're gonna ask questions.
I'm understanding in the presentation, the lease agreement is strictly going to only allow 19 tenants to own vehicles.
Yeah, I wanted to talk to planning staff about that.
That is correct. The way it's written, that.
It, it's, I think it's written incorrectly. So the ownership is gonna put in management. There's onsite management and there's gonna be a parking management plan. But we can't, we can't, we can't force the, only 19 people to have only 19 cars as, without violating the, the parking concessions that we've already received from the state. So I think that has to be rewarded in somehow, some way.
Yeah, so the, the intent was to have a maximum of 19 cars onsite to match the, the parking. So we'll discuss with, with the city attorney. parking, so we'll discuss with, with the city attorney.
And how, just curious, if that 19 cars goes through, how would that be enforced?
Well, that, that, that's kind of my point, is that. We, the, this is set up by the state jurisdictions that, to allow less than one-to-one parking. So we can't have an agreement that says that the tenants all have to have parking. So I'm not quite sure how to resolve that. We'd have to word it in a way that we, we still are offering a management plan to try and mitigate that we only have 19, but we can't force tenancy based on that.
So it could end up whereas the 19 doesn't fly and then there would be overflow, severe overflow parking issues.
Or still, my attention that they're using scooters and transit and bicycles to offload some of those needs.
I agree. Thank you. In a perfect world, that would be great.
Yeah. Well, but, but again, like, if, if we offer two and a half parking spaces per unit, we're, we're not at a low-income unit anymore. Now we're a $3,000 a month apartment. The, the, the nature of the beast is, is that parking costs like $50,000 per parking space to build by the time you get it done. And, and these costs all go back to the renters. So it, it's just a, it's, it's the nature of the beast that for us to make this affordable, we can't offer all the amenities and everything that we'd like to.
No, I understand. You, you had mentioned there are points basically allocated for point five parking. Like, is that the front end of the car or the back end of the car?
Just half a car.
Commissioner Kane, I do want to clarify that condition 20 on the conditions of approval. It does require the applicant's evidence of leasing agreements, which reflect a maximum of 19 occupants with vehicles, and that's subject to approval by the development staff director.
Thank you, counselor.
Commissioner Camacho?
Do you work with the, you said you're, you're the builder, but you're not the operator. You said you're going to work with a.
I'm the architect.
Property management. Do you work with the city, like, housing department to fill those or is it like through your own company?
I'll, I'll let you speak.
Yes, we, we do plan on working with the local housing authority. We're also working with supportive service provider organizations, nonprofits that, and we're prioritizing specific populations, families for the two bedrooms and seniors for the one bedrooms.
Awesome. Thank you.
Commissioner Antiveros?
I believe the two bedrooms, 600, a little bit over 600 square feet. That's the largest one, correct?
Yeah. Those are half our units.
And the one bedroom, how much, how much was that?
I think it's just, it's four 60-something.
Five.
That's the two-bedroom, I think. Yeah, and the, and the one-bedroom's like four 60-something.
And going back to the parking, there's, there's no guest parking, obviously, right?
No.
Because of the footprint of the property.
We, we are still providing a two ADA accessibility EV parking and, yeah, and, and informal scooter and bike parking.
Okay, thank you.
For the bike parking situation, is it going to be locked indoors? Is it outside?
We have bike parking underneath the stair in the back and then in the lobby towards the front, and then we have guest bike parking out on the sidewalk, which would be for temporary use, I would anticipate.
And that won't be like public facing or like the public can't see that, right? That'll be on the rear-facing or indoors?
All are long-term, is indoors or in the back. There's, I think, four spots in the front for temporary, yeah, like deliveries, that kind of stuff.
Perfect. Commissioner Antiveros?
All right, one more question. Security, we, would you have cameras installed or some type of, what kind of security you have for that facility?
Well, the ownership is, is part of the concessions, has, has agreed that they're going to have onsite management full-time and, and that that's going to be managing security and mitigating parking and doing all the things that a management company should do.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Tru?
Just a follow-up question. You mentioned about EV parking. I'm assuming one or two EV parking sites?
Yeah. Yeah, but we combine them with the ADA, well, next to the ADA, so there's one ADA EV and then the one next to it is EV, not ADA.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to clarify what we just said, so if there's management onsite, do they pay an HOE? Like, if they're owners, is that what you're saying? These would be owned?
The ownership group pays for, for that. It, it's mandated by state, then anything more than 23 units has to have onsite management.
The building ownership?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and so you're not, no longer offering three-bedroom options?
No, there's no three bedrooms.
The reason behind that is because all 35 units are low-income?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Thank you. All right, and now we'll have a public. Any more cards, just in case, if you want to give it? There's, oh, yeah. All right, if I can get Jennifer Ortega to come up to the podium, please. Just a reminder that you have three minutes for public comment. This is on the agenda item. And lastly, staff, is there a timer where residents can see? Is on this?
The computer's not giving us access to it, so we don't.
Sorry, repeat that?
We don't have the, the visual timer. The computer's not giving us access to it.
Staff is taking, staff is taking.
I just want, um, I know that you guys are, but it's a visual cue for residents to know like how long they've been speaking.
We'll make sure that gets fixed for the next meeting.
No. But she is getting her phone, which, well, so, yeah, I'm sorry about that. I know sometimes you think three minutes is like short and then ends up feeling different.
I just want to make sure, I, I actually, I'm coming in right on time. I practiced.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
All right. Good evening. My name is Jan Ortega. My husband and I bought our home in Pomona in 1998, and we've spent the last 27 years raising and educating our kids here and are truly proud to be homeowners and citizens of this diverse and historic city. When we first learned about the project at 1377 North Gary, we were absolutely shocked. After some communication with our neighbors, we realized that we were one of only a few households notified. We came to understand that city staffers had doubled the public noticing distance of 1,000 feet. I think a lot about this. I mean, they did more than they were required. At the same time, what would their reactions be in the same situation? I'm sure that they would want more consideration. By consideration, I do not mean completely giving in to our every whim. Naturally, in any community, there will be interests that put us at odds with one another. As residents, we realize that governmental agencies must think about the greater good as well as making decisions that take state law into account. Pathways to tomorrow spokespeople tug on our heartstrings, explaining that having less units or more parking spaces won't make the project financially feasible. But make no mistake about it, pathways is not, is making money off this. And that's okay. It's okay to make a profit. But they are actually passing along improvements that we've suggested and saying, well, that would make us have to increase costs for residents. I don't know that I think that's always true. I think often it just means their profits are lowered and instead of lowering their own profits, they would rather raise prices for the people that need the residence. Our concerns are many. What are the implications of 35 units on less than half an acre? Isn't it strange to have four floors hovering over an elementary school? We're giving beautiful views to the tenants but taking away views from the children. Where will the parked cars go? I've heard people talking about that. Why isn't the property required to provide some sort of outdoor space? Instead of working to dispel our fears, city staffers have not responded to us. On June 15th, I sent something to several city staffers and received no response. This was Mayor Tim Anita Scott, Betty DeNavenic. In the future, I have 20 seconds left, here's what we ask. We've heard that PUSD would like to trade for a larger parcel of land, and we ask that you strongly encourage that. If the property must be built, we would like the city staff to be more proactive with us, including notifying people within at least a block of the property, having frequent Q and A sessions to understand concerns and working with residents to understand what they can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get Wendy Perez, please?
My name is Wendy Perez and I've also lived in the neighborhood for about 20-plus years. I want you to imagine yourself, I assume some of you have children, and I'm a teacher, and I, and I have a classroom in a portable. And I want you to know that the portables, the walls are very thin. You could hear every single thing outside. And all I could imagine as a teacher, thinking, what are my children, what are my students subject to? Yes, they remove the balconies, but there's really no buffer between the school and the students and the tenants that live there. So when Pomona Unified offered to swap properties, I thought, wow, you have a very important decision to make. Who, who is, what is the welfare that you're thinking of? Are you thinking of the welfare of the children who are current residents of Pomona, the people that have already put their roots here? The people who have this opportunity to have that, you know, low, you know, opportunity to do better? Or the people who are coming from the outside? There's so, if, I drive around Pomona all the time. In fact, right next to Del Taco, there's a bus stop. If you drive on Gary at any given day, you will see homeless people sleeping on those bus stops. And what's to say that the people that use this public transportation are not going to be in, you know, I, I think about all the different things that could possibly go wrong, and I don't know if a lot of it has, has even been considered, you know? And I, it's, it just baffles me that all this happened and there was very little community input. I, I just want you to think about your children being at that school with a four-story building looking down on them. And also go drive around other cities and see, how close are homes and residents next to schools? Are they that close? And you're going to find that answer is overwhelmingly no. And there's probably a reason for that, right? There's probably a reason. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Can I get Stephanie Frescas?
Follow-up question to one of the ending conversations that we had here, that the architect mentioned about needing to adjust the verbiage in the leasing agreement. I want to know if the condition to restrict only 19 tenants to own vehicles be upheld? And if that condition is upheld, that a leasing agreement says that 19 people can own a vehicle, is it own? Is it drive? Is it park? Because they can park a vehicle and say it's not mine, therefore I'm not in, I'm not in any, a rule break for my lease. So you can have all, so what is it, up to 100 tenants saying, nope, not my car, I'm just driving it. So I'd like to clarify that the leasing verbiage indicates that they cannot park a vehicle on or near the property unless it's within their leasing agreement. The second thing I want to ask is, when someone does park a vehicle on or near the property and it's not in their leasing agreement, how will the break in the leasing agreement be enforced? Are they going to be evicted? Or is their parking proctor just going to tell them no, no? What is the action that the property owner is responsible for when someone breaks their lease? How long does it take for someone to be evicted for breaking their agreement? I don't think saying that they will have management onsite is in any way enforcing a rule that someone has to sign and agree. And you guys all understand that all of those people are going to be parking in front of all of our homes in Lincoln Park, longtime property owners, taxpayers, we work hard to keep our properties looking pretty, and many of us, we don't have the luxury of having a driveway, because that is not the way that, that neighborhood was created. Nor are we allowed to put a driveway in, because we are restricted under the historical society rules. So we will have to share our public parking with people who are not supposed to be parking in front of our home. And I don't agree with that, that these people can come in under SB 330 and make whatever concessions or waivers. Basically, what we explained today was, if there's something that doesn't fit in the rule, they'll just create a waiver, and we have no re, we have no recourse. And that's not fair to the rest of us who have been living in Lincoln Park or surrounding areas. Also, I'm the lucky one who lives on Jefferson. So if you can remember, the street improvements do not allow a left park, a left go, going out.
Thank you.
So everyone is going to come down Jefferson.
Can I please have Darren Knowles come up? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson Molina, Vice Chair, Mr. Rodriguez, and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys this evening. My name is Darren Knowles. I'm the superintendent for the Pomona Unified School District, and I am, I'm here on behalf of all five of my board members. At the, I, I also want to thank staff for the, the presentation, and I want to thank Sarah and John for the opportunity. We did have an opportunity to meet and talk and, and learn more about each other. We still retain the position that this four-story building overlooking Lincoln Elementary School play area is a safety issue. I understand the state requirement in terms of direct impact is a very high standard. But I know when the state lottery, when it goes up to a billion dollars, I buy a lottery ticket. I know statistically I may not be able to win it, but if I do, it's going to have a direct impact on me. In the Vegas shooting, that gentleman shot 60 people and killed them, and he shot from a elevated position. And so I, I think the people that were attending that concert that day, if they looked at the amount of shooters and the shootings that happened in the, in the United States, they thought statistically they were going to be safe and there was not going to be any direct impact to them. We have, the district has 80 acres of surplus property that we're in the process of surplusing, and we think this is a great opportunity to work with the city and also work with developers and also, you know, with this affordable housing opportunity. We do have some, some properties that would fit this four-story building beautifully. And so we still maintain the position that having a four-story building, and we do appreciate the concession about moving, removing the balcony, but you're still going to have a window there. And so, you know, that still is a safety issue for the district and we still are concerned about it. And thank you for the opportunity to address here tonight.
Thank you. Can I get Mitch Elias?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Mitch Elias, 20-year, 20-plus-year resident of the city of Pomona. I live in the Lincoln Park area. This project writer, I had a lot of things written out and, and everything was just kind of written, right? But just like the, the other people that spoke before me, just you guys drive around that city just as much as we do. The Gary corridor, as you know, has been drastically improved. And if you've noticed, it's probably much, much thinner than it was before. Now, now, just think about this, now you're going to put a four-story project, 35 units, 19 cars in there, going in and out, in and out, in and out. What do you guys expect is going to happen? I mean, you're right off the freeway, people are going to be racing right down there. I, I just think it's a, it's a disaster waiting to happen. And I, I had other thoughts about, you know, the, the historical, the school that's right next door. I, I have concerns of not only the residents that, that are living locally or surrounding the, the proposed project, but even the tenants that, that are going to be residing in this particular building. You're going to put everyone in jeopardy. It, it just, it just does not make sense. It just does not make sense. I am not against affordable housing, not at all. Just this particular project in this particular location, doesn't make sense. Four-story? I haven't even seen four-story. You drive down, you drive down the Gary corridor, what four-story property do you guys see? I mean, it just doesn't exist. And if you have other people, a superintendent here, that is basically saying, we could trade. And. And they're not open to that? Has anybody asked, what other projects have they already done and completed? And have you seen, seen it through? I haven't seen it. I haven't found it. I've been searching. I haven't found it. I think there's a lot of word salad being put in all this paperwork, all kinds of word salad. But I don't see anything else. I need, just really think about this, guys. Really, really think about it. You guys are residents of the city of Pomona. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Can I get Guillermo Gonzalez to come up, please?
Thank you. I want to point out a few things here. The developer indicates that they will have a lease agreement that will prohibit, I guess, a certain number of residents from owning a vehicle. I want to know if it's permissible actually to prohibit owning a vehicle on a lease agreement. I used to own rental properties and I'll tell you, if I ever went to court and said, I'm evicting this person because they own a car, I think the judge would probably laugh me out of the courtroom. I don't know that that is enforceable. And the fact that they say that they're going to do that, it just leads me to believe that they're being dishonest. They mentioned scooters. It's clear that they haven't done their homework. We used to have scooters here. There was a company that dropped off a bunch of them in the city. And the city prohibited them from doing that and made them pick them all up. So what scooters are they gonna use when we don't even have scooters in the city? Since 1999, there's been an 800% increase in mass shootings in this country. 800%. We know recently that if you give a person elevation, they get a clear shot. They mentioned that there's a 250-feet distance from the building to the playground. In Vegas, the shooter was about 500 yards away. That's 1,500 feet. How many people died? How many people were shot? This is a clear view to children, not adults. Children. A four-story apartment overlooking the playground. I don't know, you talked about a preponderance of the evidence. To me, that's a lot of evidence that there's a danger. Now, one of the things that really bothers me about staff's presentation is they said they received one letter in support. They didn't mention all the emails that we sent, the people that came up and spoke opposed to this project. Why is our voice less important than that one letter? Thank you.
Can I get Larry Head up, please?
Thank you for, thank you for allowing us to speak. I agree with him. We got very short notice and overall, they talk about, as you've heard, 19 parking spaces for what would be at least 100 people. A four-story building where there are no four-story buildings anywhere near this area. You've got the opportunity to swap properties where a four-story would be appropriate. There is no street parking on Gary anymore. It's a no-stopping area. So that means if anybody's going to park a vehicle, they're going to be parking it across the street, most probably in the Jefferson Street or Lincoln Park neighborhood where there is already very few, little parking in that area. Most people have things delivered to their home, amazon.com, et cetera. Where is the Amazon truck going to park? Where is the mail carrier going to park? Any other deliveries to the area? They're not going to be able to park on the street. It sounds like there's not going to be much of any area for them to drive onto the property to park and make their delivery. They're going to be blocking the area for at least five, 10 minutes while they're there. $1,750 a month? That doesn't sound like low, low income. And the use of scooters, that's not, that's not very viable. We're going to have jaywalkers going across the street back and forth. And that street has become very congested anymore with the narrowness of the street. You've heard a lot of waivers being requested for this property. At least four different waivers. These were rules and standards set because of there being a reason why we wanted to set a standard. And now you're going to just waive all of the standards that were decided upon years ago. If they want to put up a four-story building, put it in a location where it fits. It does not fit on Gary Avenue. Thank you.
Sorry, y'all. I have allergies. So if I could have the applicant to come up, please? And you have five minutes to give any closing comments and any rebuttals to what the public has said.
Hi. Yeah, no, so I understand about parking. And we're trying to do everything we can to mitigate. One of the things I think that makes this well-positioned is the ability to use commercial parking on Gordon and other streets which would not be used during residential hours and would be available. And the overflow that we're talking about at a 1:1 ratio is, is only 19 parking spaces. That's if nobody has a scooter and no one has a bike, which is not our accommodations. Our accommodations really are to try to make it as friendly as possible. Some of the, some of the neighborhood criticisms that there was an input and, or that we should pick another site, like this, this site was picked because it was zoned R4 for residential use. It was picked because it's in a corridor-specific plan to accommodate low-income housing. Like this, this was picked, we spent a year trying to find a lot in Pomona that would work underneath your city's guidelines. And we, we felt like we, we found it and we embraced all of the conditions of those approvals. And I believe that's the community input that led us here. Yeah, I don't think I have anything else to say. Do you have any questions for me? No, thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah. Commissioner Antares?
Yes, so you briefly mentioned it. So my question would be, if the reason why you didn't take the offers for taking another property is because of the zoning, you wanted this specific zoning for low-income?
We've been on this almost two years.
But if there's another property that's being offered to you?
I can't stop, speak for the ownership on that.
Yes, please.
We only met with, with Darren and the school board last Thursday. We've not been proposed any alternate sites. We just had our initial conversation on Thursday. And we are open to considering it. With that being said, while we're open to considering it, we ask you all, consider that this project is about five years in the making now. We proposed several projects to our funding source, San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust, before we were able to receive funding for this particular project, which speaks to just the difficulty in bringing affordable housing units to market that are much needed to both Pomona and the greater San Gabriel Valley region. And so I just want to draw your attention to that, that this is several years in the making, just to receive the funding. And then from the moment we received the funding, it's been about almost two years. We received the funding in 2023. We're now almost the end of 2025. So we're two years in and we're facing an appeal. Prior to that, there were several years spent in securing the funding. So I just want to, to inform you all of just the difficulty of this process, the length of this process, and that a swap, there's a lot that goes into a swap. We will have, there'll be a sunk cost in the funds that we've spent on pre-development. So we'll have to secure new funding for pre-development to develop the new property. You know, we've, we've already spent a significant amount of funds to acquire the property and to get it entitled to the point that it is now. So there are just a lot of considerations and it's much more complicated than a simple swapping one-for-one land. And I just want, want to make sure that that's clear. I hope that that answers questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, you had said, there were other considerations, other locations that you had looked at before? Agreeing or finalizing this location? And why was, why was this location chosen?
Yes, I'd love to answer that for you. So we went through a process where we were competing with private developers for land that's open on the market, right? You know, land that's owned by the city is not available to us, so we have to compete with private developers. And we put bids in for about six different sites prior to securing this site. And those bids fell through for various reasons. One, a private developer overbid us. You know, sometimes a site, or many times a site will have multiple offers. We are limited in the budget that we have to develop affordable housing, as we, you hear this coming up continually as a concern. We're, we're also developing this site with majority private financing. So we're not using low-income housing tax credits. We're employing a new model whereby we develop with private financing, which really limits our budget. Because when you have something like tax credit financing, it allows you to have a larger budget. This is why you hear about some affordable developments being developed at something like $400, $450,000 per unit. Our budget is significantly lower than that. We are developing affordable housing on a much lower budget, a much lower budget than, than is typical for affordable housing developments. I've heard mentions of profit. You know, we're actually beholden to private finance sources and lenders to meet a certain debt service coverage ratio. As in, the rents for the property have to be able to cover the cost of constructing the property. As I'm sure many of you know, the costs of construction are rising every day, as are the costs of labor. And so we're subject to all of these constraints and limitations that we're, we're working with to make this project work. And we've been able to make it work up to this degree with all of those constraints and limitations. And, and essentially, you know, we are facing a massive affordable housing shortage throughout, not just this region, but throughout all of California. And, and, you know, opposition like this doesn't make it any easier to bring much-needed affordable housing to market for the families and seniors and, and also young people that need it. I hope that, that did answer your question. Did I?
There was some, a number of topics that came up regarding the ability to tie tenants to parking. For the reasons they're pointing out, that's why it's not tenable. It's, I'm not sure how we, I think the wording got changed or something, but the way it's positioned now, it's restricting the ability of low-income people to have or not have cars or have tenancy.
The wording has not changed since the zoning administrator hearing, but we did, the city attorney did do some research, so he'll be, be able to answer that. And then after he answers that, then I'll chime in on how the city will be enforcing that.
Yeah. So, so landlord can restrict parking on their property. It would be through their lease. So there's no, there's no state law or anything that prohibits a landlord from restricting parking on the property.
Well, but, but the state mandate that we only provide .5 parking per tenants automatically also says that we can't restrict tenancy based on parking. It's not, it's not the landlord's inability to enforce it. It's that we can't meet our state requirement for half a parking space per tenancy if you start to tie tenancy to parking. We, we can't deny tenants whether or not they have a car.
Yeah. But that is the condition of approval and that is what you had agreed upon before.
No, we didn't agree to that. We can't have, we can't have a condition that says we can't have tenancy if they don't have a car. It doesn't meet the state requirement. So I don't know how to resolve that. But it, for the reasons that they're bringing up, what are you gonna do, kick someone out if they buy a car? Or are you gonna, you know, police the car ownership or rental? It just becomes untenable on a lot of different levels.
Commissioner Rodriguez? No. Commissioner Antares?
As part of affordable housing, that would also be part of Section 8 acceptance?
Yes, we will be working with the local housing authority as well as with supportive service providers, nonprofits that specialize in helping tenants with tenant-based Section 8 vouchers, secure housing at this development.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tru?
So I know parking seems to be a concern for the neighborhood. Have we thought about, I know you can't limit, you know, the amount of cars the tenants are owning, but we, can't we think about maybe a parking permit system for the neighborhood around? So, and only issue parking permits for the neighbors?
Right now, there is a moratorium on permit parking within the city, so that would not be an available option at this time.
If, when that moratorium is lifted, if a neighborhood wants to apply for?
Yes, yes. The, the specific neighborhood or block would have to apply through the city for that.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't link that. Commissioner Tru? Commissioner King?
I'm just curious, for future developments, is there a way that the city can mitigate the parking situation? There was a development that was proposed to go up in District 6, literally almost in our backyard, on a much larger scale. And parking was the huge problem because there was no parking currently. So for future projects that come to planning, is there a way that the city can look at mitigating prior to the approval process? Or is that just no?
I mean, I think it depends on, on the unit count. Underneath 200 units, they're, they don't meet the threshold for VMT. So if it's less than 200 units, we wouldn't necessarily look at it. But, I mean, it's not to say that we can't, you know, give a little more special attention to it, but they, they do, they do typically come in with a ratio that's a little bit higher than the proposed development today. Typically, they have a .5 or a .75 ratio. The ratio that this development has is probably one of the lowest ones we've seen that's outside of the transit circle. So this, this project is a little bit more unique.
And I would say that it has to do with, the difference is the affordability. It's because they're, they're proposing an affordable housing project, automatically the parking requirements are lower. And then if they request the concessions, then that limits the city's ability as well. If it was market rate housing, then we have more control over the parking.
Thank you. I was just wondering if there was a way to mitigate future applications so this didn't become...
Should I close the public hearing so that we can continue?
If you have no further questions for the applicant, yes.
Does anyone have any further questions for the applicant? Or is it just for staff? You do? Okay. Commissioner Tru?
Just to follow up on, on the parking situation. So once that is lifted, can we put a condition that this development cannot apply for the residential parking permit?
The residential parking permit would be for the area that would be permit parking. So that would be for public streets. Because this project has onsite parking where it's not public streets, then the parking permit system would not work for them. So for example, if it gets lifted, if the Lincoln Park neighborhood wanted to implement permit parking on their street, then they are the ones that would have to apply for it.
Got it. So basically, this development, people who are living in this housing unit won't be eligible for those parking permits anyways?
Correct. So let's just say that Lincoln Park neighborhood applied for the permit parking that was issued, then only the residents of the Lincoln Park neighborhood could park on those streets with the permit.
Okay. So that, that could potentially be a, be a solution for the, for the parking issue? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, question for the applicant. I guess I'm just curious to know, you know, what is the reason behind the shift to go fully low-income or to offer fully low-income units? I believe you were mentioning there's some grant state funding for the applicant for affordable housing. Could that be the real reason why you're choosing to go full low-income?
The new low-income capabilities that your city and the state offers allow us to get to density levels to make it feasible. So if, if this lot was built under regular non-low-income, the first level, all of the first level would be parking entirely. It would be a concrete floor and then there'd be two levels of housing above it. You'd maybe get 15 units out of it. And the whole entire first level would be relatively impersonal parking structure. Those are very expensive buildings to build. In your city, it's tough to get market rate rents that are enough to provide for that type of construction. A podium deck construction like that is, is millions of dollars. And so I would say, your market doesn't support the luxury status of a small market rate apartment building.
Would you say that's a development?
Would you say that's a developer, um, decision?
I'd, I'd say it's a construction feasibility position, that, that your rents aren't high enough to pay for, uh, expensive apartments.
The reason I ask is because I know we've approved at least a couple of projects that have that first-level parking that you're suggesting.
But usually in areas with more height, right, like four or five stories. So, the limitation on this site is, you guys own it R4, but it's only good for three stories without the low-income component. So, it, it would actually never be built because it just doesn't pencil out to do an entire first-floor parking with only 15 units. So, that the only, the only way this site ever becomes activated is actually with the low-income, but I think it's the genius of the low-income status that allows you to activate these areas that wouldn't get a lot of attention otherwise. At least, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
And just for Planning Commission's clarification, um, it, the zone is the Pomona Corridor specific plan. And I think when he's, when the applicant is stating R4, he means T4, which is the amount of density. So, not to be confused with our previous zoning, um, which did have R4.
Thank you, Steph.
Commissioner Kane?
I'm just curious, you mentioned the, the moratorium on permit parking. Why was that enacted in the first place?
I believe that, uh, we have, we do have a representative from Public Works here, but I believe that it's because the city needs to, um, review the process for that, and we have not been able to do that yet.
Thank you.
Any more questions for the applicant? No? Okay, closing public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Commissioner Tru asked earlier about rent limits, and I found through LA County Development Authority, um, for the 20-25-year, 80% AMI rent limits for a one-bedroom, just county general, so obviously gets adjusted which part of the county you're in. But 80, 80% AMI, uh, one-bedroom is $22.72, and two-bedrooms is, uh, $27.26. And that's occupancy factor of one and a half per, per bedroom.
And that's the maximum?
That would be the maximum at 80%. So, if you go to 50%, because these are between 50 and 80, it's, uh, $14.20 for the one-bedroom at 50% and $17.03 for the two-bedroom.
That is...
That's the county low income.
Yes.
Commissioner Camacho? Yeah, I already closed public hearing.
Question for our counsel. Based on what you heard from the public, um, I know this isn't the first time that I've had a SB 330 project come before me. Did you hear anything that we could have a finding for, um, particularly as it relates to, um, I know parking is off, off the table, but shootings, school shootings, um, from that, the, just the height limit?
Yeah, no. So, um, as Staff said earlier, it has to be a specific adverse, um, impact on public health. So, just generally putting out shootings, um, that's not a specific adverse impact on public health. And as Staff said earlier, the HCD has only upheld one, and that's the Monterey example. So, um, another example I could think of is, um, if this was being built on a brown field, um, which a brown field is contaminated with oil and, 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 um, adverse, and would have a specific adverse on public health, and that's another reason why you would be able to do it. But something that is not objective, um, HCD won't, won't uphold it, and the city will end up getting sued.
Just follow-up question, um, because I know we heard from, um, the members of the public about the school board wanting to, um, switch properties with them, and I know the applicant said that's out of the question, it'll limit. Would that, um, would it count as one single application, like, like one project where it would, um, violate that five-meeting threshold under SB 330?
So, when they bring up the land, um, so it's, it's called the Surplus Land Act. The Surplus Land Act has specific steps that the school district would have to, um, go through, so they have to have a public hearing. They have to, um, determine that that land is surplus land and that they're gonna put it out. They, they don't just put it out to this one specific, um, developer. This goes to HCD as well, and then HCD has a list that they put out to everybody, and then there is competition. So, it's not as simply them sitting down and being exchanging...
Here's the ping.
Yeah, like exchanging deeds. So, no, um, there's still specific steps that have to, um, occur.
And then just, um, let's say we had a, a finding, or we find a reason to deny it based off what we heard tonight. Would it still, like, would it still kind of as one singular project if we, like, stalled it? Like, we, we basically can't, right? Is that the, what I understand from SB 330?
Um, are you talking about the number of meetings, or...
Number of meetings, and then just the, the time limit of...
Yes, so there are a number of meetings. There's five meetings, um, so this would count as the second meeting. The first meeting was the zoning administrator meeting. So, there are three other meetings, um, that can be held. If you reach that threshold of five meetings, um, that's when HCD, um, steps in, or, or the city will receive a letter from HCD, um, pretty much putting the city on warning of, um, either approving the project, them stepping in and approving the project, or, or like they said, um, finding the city.
This is actually the third meeting, because we did have a community meeting that we noticed everyone within a thousand feet in April. So, this is actually the third meeting, so there's two left.
Okay, and then, um, sorry, last question. I want to understand process before we get into our opinion. A city council member appealed this, um, and I understand that...
Two members, yes.
Yeah, two, uh, two city council members appealed this. Let's say we, we upheld, we uphold your decision to approve it. They can appeal again.
Correct.
And then that'll be the fourth meeting?
Yes.
So, they can appeal the appeal?
Yes, they will be appealing the Planning Commission's decision.
Okay, and they would know about all these findings, correct, and all the legal...
Correct. So, it'll basically be, if it does get appealed, it'll be the same hearing that you had tonight in front of the city council.
Okay. Commissioner Tru?
Chair, would you entertain a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would like to motion...
I would just, uh, sorry, Commissioner Tru, I'd just like to add that because we're still researching the parking issue for that condition, condition number 20, we would like to add if legally feasible or if legally enforceable. That way, if it is enforceable legally, then, then that will carry on, and if not, then that, uh, condition will be removed.
And the applicant has to be...
Yes, they have to be amenable to that. So, if you'd like to ask them if they are or not.
Would you be amenable to that?
Do we have an alternative where we exclude that from the approval?
Staff found that that was the only way to, to mitigate the traffic and, sorry, the parking impacts, so that would be up to the commission if they felt that there was an alternative for that.
I would agree with Staff, so, uh, my motion would be... So, hold up, so are you amenable to the m- motion if it is legally...
As long as it's legal.
Can we instead, I don't know that legal's the right term, can we say if it's in compliance with the state requirements for this?
As permissible by law?
Yes, as permissible by law would work.
But law everywhere, but, but I, like, I think specifically it's the California enhanced density bonus.
Correct, yes, that would include that.
Okay, can, can we mention that somehow specifically?
Yes, that will be revised.
Okay.
So, I would make a motion to approve Staff recommendation that the Planning Commission should uphold the decision of the zoning administrator approval, as long as the parking requirement is, God, how do you word it, is, um, compiled with state law, state and federal law?
Yeah, that's fine.
There you go.
I'll second. We do have a motion on the table, but open for deliberation. Commissioner Camacho?
Yeah, and there is usually, um, discussion after a motion. Yeah, I, first, I want to say, uh, thank you to the public for, for coming to speak. I agree with you that, that the location, um, isn't ideal for a four-story, uh, building. But I, I will disagree with a lot of things, and, and there is a four-story building on Gary less than a mile away, um, and I lived there for six years. And it's actually across the street from a middle, from a school, um, the School of Art and Enterprise. And I moved because I kept hearing the, the bells, and, um, I just got over it. But yeah, I, I do want to say that when we make decisions up here, and I've been here for seven years, and, and, you know, the SB 330 was passed in 2019, our assembly member, Freddie Rodriguez, uh, voted for it. He, he, he voted, um, for it, and, and I, I was, actually was really happy that, that it passed because, um, we're in a housing crisis here in California. So, I, I do want to say that we, we hear you. We, you know, I've been noticed when there's been built, like, new development, and I've had to recuse myself because I live close to, to new development. But I just can't, we can't make decisions based off of parking, as you've heard, and we can't make decisions based off of, um, what could happen. So, I, I am in favor of the project only because there's nothing that I heard today that we could uphold. I think, um, I asked, you know, our legal if, if we could. I would encourage you, as, as Commissioner Kane, um, you know, suggested, that we speak with city council, and we see if there's any measures that the city council can approve. We just, we did just pass a zoning code, um, last year. Not a lot of public input. I think the only time that we heard a lot of public input was when we were discussing warehouses, um, and it was in support of bigger warehouses. But yeah, I would just say that I, I'm voting yes, only because there's really, literally no legal recourse, um, for us to deny this project. And it'll open us up for, um, litigation. The state attorney, the, yeah, the state attorney general has been very fierce about going after cities, so I'm in support of it, but I, I do agree with the, the public that, um, it's probably not the best location.
All right, so, thanks, everyone, for coming out. It's very lively. Hope you come back in two weeks as well, as we discuss really important things, and civic engagement is super important to make sure that we have public input from future development, not just from development next to your home. So, I, I heard a lot of concerns about, uh, parking, and I always have issue with that, um, because, uh, your parking needs are being addressed by the city slowly, but there, it's moving in a process. As we've seen, Gary has been redone with a center median that slows down traffic. There is more crosswalks, there's a bike lane now, the sidewalks are getting redone, there's trees coming in. The city's also working on a comprehensive, um, plan to address multimodal transportation in Pomona. Multimodal transportation is coming to the state of California. Pomona's taking extra steps to be ahead of that. Whether you like it or not, it's happening. People are gonna take bikes, people are gonna scooter, people are gonna walk, people are not gonna drive, people are gonna take public transportation. Whether you like it or not, it's happening, and every city has to meet those requirements. And the city is taking proactive change, not waiting for the state to enforce it like other cities. They're saying, "We're gonna get ahead of the curve." With that said, I don't drive. I bike everywhere. I have an e-bike. The city of Pomona is also getting a huge e-bike library where residents are going to be able to rent bikes, e-bikes for free or for very low, like a dollar per month. So, the shortages of where are the scooters gonna come from? Where are the, they're coming, and they're here. They're literally purchased already. People will have access to that. That is a free program that's coming to Pomona for four years. Not only that, we just had the bike, the bike, the new station open up. Have y'all taken that station? I have. I have taken it to work. I have taken that train prior to the A-line coming in. I've taken the metro link to, to El Monte, I've taken the metro link to, to downtown LA. Now, with the A-line, I get to get to Pasadena to work as well. I work here in Pomona, I have an office in Pasadena, sometimes I have to go to downtown LA as well for work. I bike up Gary, take the train. Many people, especially young people today, are not purchasing cars. As many of you know, prices are getting extremely expensive. I'm part of that demographic of, of young people who are not buying cars. We opt in into other alternatives of, of transportation. Now, concerns about parking again. If someone is moving into a place, they're gonna make their decisions based off of different things, right? If I'm moving into somewhere, I need to be close to a transit stop, I need to be close to bike lanes, I need to be close to a grocery store because I'd be able to transport a lot of food, which currently, where I live, I have all of those amenities. When people are moving, they realize, "Oh, I'm gonna have no parking." Do you think people are gonna move there? People aren't gonna be moving in there based off of their lifestyles, based off of what they want. And I've also heard comments about shootings, um, specifically from PUSD as well. I don't appreciate the type of fear-mongering, uh, comments that were made about shootings. In that case, any four-story development coming to Pomona shouldn't be allowed because anyone can get up there and shoot from below. That's clearly not true. We can't make decisions based off of hypotheticals or what-ifs. And if you do have issues with gun laws, there are legal avenues for you guys to go talk to people who make laws and decisions on those gun laws. The Planning Commission is not the place to do that. We overlook zoning and land use and development in the, in Pomona. Also heard comments about outside people coming to Pomona. I'm one of those outside people that came to Pomona. I grew up in Los Angeles. I lived there until 2013, until I moved to Pomona to study college, and I've lived here ever since. I love the city dearly, that's why I'm here, that's why I'm on this board, and that's why I constantly advocate for my community. Now, I am one of those outside people, and I moved here due to gentrification. I could not afford where I lived in Los Angeles, and my parents couldn't. We were displaced. My parents live not so close to, uh, to where we grew up. I live all on the other side of the county, and I am one of those outside people. Now, your kids are gonna grow in the city, and they're gonna soon realize that the housing stock is too low, and they have to move further and further away. In order to fight that, we need to build more affordable housing. We need more housing stock. We can't just add a single-family home next to Lincoln and have a free-for-all for a $2 million home. We see what housing prices are right now. We can't address that without building affordable housing. And a lot of times is, I've never fight these, this is the first one, you're, there's always those people coming into those meetings. This is, I'm not against affordable housing, just not specifically this one. It's always a specific one, it's every project. They want affordable housing, but not in their neighborhood. Well, I, on the other hand, do want affordable housing, because my parents live in affordable housing. I'm a working-class citizen, I'm a working-class person, I work at a nonprofit. In order to live in these homes, this is what I need in order to afford to live in these homes. And I'm not, my story is not unique. The story's in every city. We need young people to be able to afford a, a place to live. If not, they're gonna be moving further and further away. I also don't like the insinuation that there's gonna be school shootings based off of affordable housing. What message are we trying to give to people who are low-income? That they're violent? That they're gonna do shootings? I think that's completely inappropriate. And at the end, we're opening ourselves up to $1 million worth of legal fees if we deny this. There's no grounds, only hypothetical grounds, but that's not real objective grounds, legal grounds that we could say to stop this project. I am not for the city wasting millions of dollars on taxpayers, as I want those taxpayer money to be used for things like developing better infrastructure, bringing in new housing apart, uh, new housing development, or other projects that benefit Pomona residents. Paying millions of dollars of legal fees does not benefit you, because we are going to lose that legal fight. The state of California has unlimited funds to fight these, and the general, uh, Attorney General is coming after these cities who are not complying. So, I don't want my tax dollars to be going to that. And with that, if there's no more comments, um, can we get a roll call though? Oh, okay, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I think ju- just to... You know, sure, we did hear about parking, absolutely, but I think the other big concern here is, is children and, and, yeah, school shootings, it's, it's a real concern, and I respectfully disagree, Mr. Chair. I think it's a very reasonable concern to have about the safety of your kid and your child, and to date, there's been 47 school shootings in the country. And so, I mean, for me, it's something just doesn't sit right with just having a school being that close in proximity to a building, um, what was it, two, two, 250 feet or something? And, and maybe, yeah, maybe that should be enough reason to consider it. And sure, maybe it does take a fair lot, but I do think it's a real concern that people have, and I think, uh, we should also acknowledge that, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Antares?
I think my thing that kind of concerned about is these homes going up everywhere. I mean, I'm dealing with one probably like two blocks away from me right now, it's in Claremont, right at the border, and it's just gonna, we don't know what the ramifications is gonna be, honestly, on the traffic at the moment, they're going up so quickly. I think there will be situations where there's gonna be a lot more vehicles. You can't control, it's hard to control how many people and vehicles on a certain property. And I just think it's gonna be a problem, and every city is facing this problem, we're not, we're not unique. Long Beach is, is an example how they're extreme and their, and their parking. So I feel you, residents, I understand, but once again, there's not much we can do. Hopefully, we'll find ways to mitigate the traffic. Well, you know, we adapt, and I understand, that's all I gotta say, thank you.
Commissioner Chu?
Thank you, I think the only concern that I hear from residents tonight is parking. I mean, that's the main concern, I would say. As I echo what the chair had mentioned, I'm not too concerned about, you know, having mass shooting next to, next to a school with a tall building. But parking, I think that it's a concern, and I think there are other ways to mitigate that. As I kind of mentioned, eh, once that motorium have been lifted, we could, you know, start with, with residential parking permits and things of that sort, to limit who could park in your neighborhood. And I think that's, you know, that's something that we definitely need to look, look into and, and should, you know, move on with that. But besides that, as the chair had mentioned, that's kind of where the state is going, and our hands are tied. So, thank you.
Commissioner Camacho?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say that, you know, if, if this is of great concern to, to the residents, I would just encourage you, and I imagine this will be appealed, because it was appealed by the mayor in the first place, but I would just encourage you to, to come back. And I think, Commissioner Kane, I think you were in the audience when, when the, the last, that Gary project came, if I remember correctly. And I asked about, the, the audience wanted speed bumps, and I asked about speed bumps, and staff said no at our meeting, and so we couldn't condition it. And then the city council heard the exact same presentation, and then we got speed bumps. So I would encourage you, nothing changed about the project, by the way, other than that. So I would encourage you to bring the same energy, if, and it will, I'm, I'm sure, when it's appealed. And hopefully you have recourse and you heard, but I, I will tell you that we have our, our legal representation here who, who's really versed in, in land use law. And if, and we have two people here with master's degrees in urban planning. So I would encourage you to come back and, and find some recourse, if, if you are so concerned with, with parking, and you want to find, find recourse, because I, I will tell you that we couldn't find any, any reason. I mean, at least, you know, you heard from, from folks here, it's not that we want to approve every project, it's just our hands are tied.
Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner Camacho?
Yes.
Commissioner Antiveros?
Yes.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Kane?
No.
Vice Chair Rodriguez?
Uh, no.
And Chair Molina?
Yes.
That motion passes four-two. And just for the record, it's, there's a twenty-day appeal period for this item, to appeal it to the city council. All right, send it back to you for discussion items.
Staff is going to get Commissioner Martin Marshall, so if we can just give her a couple minutes, thank you.
She was waiting for a long time. She was two, I was like, oh, she's absent now. Perfect, the more, it's easier like that, but just let them know. You listen in on your phone, it's nice. Is it the Sears Building? What does that one look like? It's not the East LA one, right? Not the Boe Heidt one? Okay, welcome back, Commissioner Martin Marshall, from the other dimension.
It was wild in there.
Okay, go ahead, staff.
So the only other item, the discussion item, just on attendance, this has requested us to, to bring it forward. Staff doesn't have any concerns, because you guys meet twice as much as any other commission in the city. And the absences haven't caused delay in any business that we're doing. But, you know, we just wanted to, to make you aware of who's missed what. I do need to point out that for the August twenty-seventh, Commissioner Rodriguez was going to attend, but he was gonna have to recuse himself, and with that being the only item, I suggested that it wasn't worth him, him coming, because he was gonna have to travel from Washington, D.C., so. For an item that he couldn't be a part of, so. But we're here to answer questions about that, but it's just really informational.
Commissioner, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, I think I, I would just like, is this something that we can edit or amend? Because I'd like to add a note also that for, was it the July ninth meeting? I did originally request, or make the request for virtual appearance. I think I made that request on June nine-seventeenth, and there's email traffic there. So defer to you how you want to, or due to staff miscommunication, whatever, but as long as it's clear that I did make that request and I wasn't able to attend because it was processed, so.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
Yes, and for, in regards to revising that, it, it was a resolution for all of the commissions and boards, so we'll bring that up to the, to the city manager and to see if that wants to be revised, because it would have to be across all of the commissions and boards.
Okay.
But I, I think it's one, ultimately, it's up to the commission whether they want to refer someone up, and as I said, staff has no concerns at this point, because I said, at, at worst, you meet twice as much as the next closest commission. And, and a lot of commissions only meet quarterly. So if, if they're meeting quarterly and they have three absences, that's most of their meetings. So as I said, staff's not, not concerned about it, but we just, you know, just to make you guys aware.
I, I brought this up just to remind the commission about our, you know, having to come here. You know, we signed up for this, this is something that we're getting paid to do, or anything like that. We, we wanted to be here, so we signed up, we're here, so. I don't see any concern, I just wanted to bring it up since we're closing on the end of the year. Just wanted to remind you, as we're getting closer to holiday times, all that. And if you can't make it, you know, life happens, I get that, but also, if you can phone it in, phone it in. You could, luckily Zoom is hooked up to your phone, and you could just call in and listen in and weigh in as much as you can. And it makes sense that you missed, Commissioner Rodriguez, I don't think that's a big issue. I thought you were recused from it as well, so.
Yeah, no, thank you, I mean, just wanted to make that clear too, so.
Is that it? No, staff communication, no?
So I did want to bring up that at your next meeting, we'll go back to our, both our code training that we, that we did, started last meeting. With the length of this item, that we thought it would be better to do that, that training next meeting. We'll also be talking about complete streets, and then I believe there's one, one project. So, and so it shouldn't be, it's mostly training, but then I think we're steady sort of the rest of the year, sort of one or two projects a meeting, with, including the training, so, that's it.
Okay, meeting adjourned to eight fifty-eight.